Next week, come to the fun part. Number four, our superintendent staff and guest report for A, Dr. Sterling.
For A, today we have Ms. Yvette Wilson speaking on collective bargaining.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Sterling, and other distinguished board members. My name is Yvette Wilson, and I represent the Petersburg Education Association. I am a union member of the largest union in this here United States. Virginia Education Association along with NIA, National Education Association. You put that camera in my face. But anyway, I'm here tonight to tell you of our journey. We are seeking collective bargaining for the community of Petersburg. We started on this journey late April. A group of your distinguished teachers and retirees traveled on this path. And the first obstacle we came through was authorization cards. So we went through all the buildings, through all of the hallways and rehearsals, and we collected authorization cards not only from our members, but the employees across the district. And you're going to hear more about that results from the person that follows me. But in that journey, I met some of the most hardworking, dedicated employees that you could ever employ. So take care of them through this process. Now, I'm here to explain the process. We're supposed to get those authorization cards to the state mandated number fifty plus one. And you're going to be surprised when you hear what we've done, okay? Once those authorization cards have been submitted, an affidavit goes forward, and then we come before you. So we're hoping that once you get the affidavit and you have the conversations and those readings, we hope that by March first of this year, you will consider negotiating contracts for the employees of your district. They work hard, they're dedicated, and they're ready to bargain at the table. So oftentimes, they're not listened to the way they should be heard. But this is an opportunity for the city of Petersburg, because I live here too, to rise up and bring all of your employees on board. So the next few speakers you will hear tonight will talk about their journey. They will talk about our stats that we're very proud of, and they will talk about what they think are the next steps before getting to the table. So I thank you for listening to me, being patient with me up here. But the next voice you hear would be the President of Virginia Education Association, Dr. James Federman.
Good evening, everyone. It is certainly a privilege and an honor to be here. My name is Dr. James J. Federman, a proud music teacher from Akimak County, located on the beautiful eastern shore. And before we get started, it's important to note that Dr. Sterling used to be my direct supervisor when she was in Akimak County. So I know your advocacy for educators, having been in Akimak County. But it's certainly a privilege and an honor to be here to, one, to just thank the school board for the wonderful relationship that they have engaged with the educators in Petersburg. And we look for this relationship to continue, to solidify that educators will have a seat at the table. And we've heard it before that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. Well, educators in the Commonwealth of Virginia and Petersburg alike, we've all endured a lot over the past two years of this global pandemic. And we need to recognize that the way we used to educate kids, it's never going to be that way anymore. We have to be innovative in our approach, and we have to make sure that our educators have an opportunity to eat their lunch, use the restroom, and to be able to adequately play it. So with that being said, I am very hopeful that collective bargaining will be a path that will move us all forward. And no longer are we going to accept, well, you're in Petersburg. I'm sorry, that's not acceptable. So if it can, if it can happen in Richmond, it can happen anywhere. If it can happen in Charlottesville, it can happen anywhere. If it can happen in Akimak County, it can sure happen in Petersburg. And it will happen in Petersburg when all of these wonderful board members put their hearts and their minds together and to listen to those that matter the most. And those are the people that are entrusted in the environments they are expected to work with, the students that did not ask to be here. And in closing, I will leave you with this. Our children are like credit cards. We can pay now or we can pay later. So I choose to invest in the children and the educators in this community, not just for today, but for days, weeks, months, and years to come. And again, my name is James Federman, the proud president of the Virginia Education Association, and I approve this message. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Patricia Cross, a second grade teacher at Pleasant Lane Elementary School and a twenty-year veteran teacher in the classroom and the president of Petersburg Education Association. We are here today to talk about collective bargaining. Yesterday, the Petersburg Education Association submitted an affidavit to the clerk of the board verifying that we have collected junior authorization cards from the majority of Petersburg City Public School employees. These cards demonstrate our support for the Petersburg City School Board to pass a collective bargaining resolution. The next step is for you to pass a resolution allowing for collective bargaining. And the submission of the affidavit yesterday, the board now has one hundred nineteen days to vote on this issue according to Virginia Code forty dot one dash fifty-seven dot two. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Frida Lewis Curtis, the Petersburg Education Association member organizer, and I am a retired thirty-two-year teacher of Petersburg City Public School and a constituent. Last month, we met with you to discuss collective bargaining. We know that many of you support it, and it should be clear from the fact that we have collected authorization cards from more than ninety percent of all Petersburg City Public Schools algebra employees support collective bargaining. For example, there are six hundred forty-eight employees and five hundred thirty-two have signed authorization cards, which means ninety percent of all certified personnel, eighty percent of school support personnel, ninety percent of the administrative personnel, which is more than enough. Throughout this process, we have increased our membership, and we welcome all employees to become part of this association. We are so excited to be working with you. We know that you are likely to have a lot of questions about this process and how you can pass a resolution that will create the best outcome for our employees, students, parents, and the entire community. We are here to work with you throughout this entire process. If you want to know how well bargaining has worked for other school divisions, we do not have to look far. Just over a month ago, Richmond educators successfully negotiated their first contract. During their December fifteenth press conference, it was clear that both administration and the employees were pleased with the agreement. Through this collective bargaining, Richmond and Petersburg will be able to attract and retain educators for the school division, which will benefit our students and community. We can be one of the school divisions leading the way on collective bargaining and employee respect. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bianca Lampley. I am a seventh-grade history teacher at Vernon Johns Middle School and a proud member of Petersburg Education Association. When we first started talking about collective bargaining, I found it very important to attend the informational sessions. And one thing that has been plaguing especially our middle school teachers this year is behaviors and discipline. And in attending the collective bargaining information sessions, I found that a consistent, solid discipline plan is something that we as teachers can come to the table and bargain for. Not just something that would benefit us, but something that will benefit the administration and the community as a whole. Something that's consistent across the district from every level of school, elementary, middle school, high school, so that parents understand the same infractions, whatever it is, repeat behavior will be dealt with the same way at every level. It just holds teachers and administration accountable for making sure the proper steps are followed, especially for repeat behaviors and frequent flying students. But also that parents understand their end and being accountable on their end, as well as the students understanding the steps and what happens next if I keep doing this same behavior over and over again. Once I heard that that was something that we could collectively bargain for, I was really, really excited to jump on board, more so than a lot of the other things that we can bargain for. Because I have seen how disciplines have led to teacher burnout, teachers leaving the profession altogether. This year has been a tough year all the way around. So I definitely am in support of collective bargaining as a PEA member and a member of staff for Petersburg City Public Schools. We desire a resolution, and we hope to give us.
Good evening, Chairman Pritchett and other board members. My name is Demi Williams. I have stepped up as PEA's interim secretary. You guys can clap for that. And I'm a first-grade teacher at Pleasant Lane Elementary School. I come to Petersburg as a career switcher with over ten years of combined experience in child advocacy and higher education. Since my membership with the PEA has participated in several informational sessions regarding collective bargaining. And collective bargaining is a process through which the employee and the school board exchange ideas, mutually solve problems, and reach a written agreement, which is known as a resolution. The resulting approved resolution binds both groups together, and each party is afforded the opportunity to revisit existing resolutions. So as an example of a resolution that was recently drafted between the township of Franklin, New Jersey, and the school district resulted, and the groups agreeing to have a school resource officer assigned to the school district and stationed at the schools throughout the district. Both groups agreed that recent events throughout the nation have suggested the presence of a school resource officer within schools can serve as a stabilizing force for schoolchildren and can further the development of student competence in law enforcement. Furthermore, both groups recognized the potential benefits of this school resource officer program to citizens of Franklin Township and to the students and staff of the school district. This example of collective bargaining, which resulted in a resolution, involves several roundtable discussions and bargaining from both sides, which, both in the end, both groups will have a ratified written agreement that can be revisited and revised during the term of the contract. In closing, the PEA exists to ensure employees of Petersburg City Public Schools are heard in addition to fostering meaningful and productive discussions that we can bring to the table to improve both teacher experiences and start student learning. So thank you for your time, and I yield.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Perkins, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Cool Spring Elementary School. I'm also a PEA member, and I'm here to speak in support of collective bargaining. As you all know, teaching across America has become more and more difficult. The pandemic has just exposed even more the issues that have been existing for years. In the school system, the focus is about student health, well-being, academic success, et cetera. But I dare to ask, what about the teachers? What about teachers' work-life balance? What about our mental health? What about the unpaid hours that we work due to not having a planning time? I could go on, but I believe a key component to help resolve some of these issues is having your support in adopting collective bargaining. By joining with us, we can make the changes that need to happen and the breakthrough that we need to see and want to see in this district. We want better for this district. We want better for our students. We want better for our teachers and our staff. There are three main issues I would like to bring before you this evening in support of collective bargaining. First is large class sizes. Large class sizes affect not only the students, but the teachers as well. High class sizes means that teachers don't have the capacity to meet the diverse needs of every student. This also means that the class can be more difficult to manage, noisy, and there may also not be enough space or desks to accommodate these students. I truly believe that collective bargaining will help to fix this problem by allowing teachers to be able to bargain with the school board for what they feel is reasonable for class sizes and ratios. Secondly, is ensuring discipline expectations are followed. As we know, a huge goal for our district is accreditation. Accreditation is not at all unattainable, but it is more difficult to achieve when you are not actually able to focus on instruction due to behaviors. Many teachers in this room, I'm sure, can attest to the high level of interruptions, disruptions, and behaviors that are constantly impeding instruction on a daily basis, not to mention the level of emotional, physical, and mental stamina it takes to constantly handle these difficult students. It can be tiring, stressful, and draining on a teacher. With that said, I believe with collective bargaining, teachers can begin to discuss reasonable behavioral expectations that take the pressure off of teachers and do not limit the flow of the instruction that we know that our students need. Finally, the last issue I have is teacher burnout. Teachers juggle so many responsibilities. Staying in contact with parents, academic performance, planning and executing lessons, attending meetings, data collection and tracking, grading papers, putting grades in the gradebook, helping in the cafeteria, filling in the gaps when other teachers are out. Those are just the smallest of things. And those are just the things that they may have to deal with at school, not to mention what teachers may be dealing with at home. Grief, anxiety, chronic disease, financial issues, depression, et cetera. It sometimes feels as if we are asked to show up as robots and show up as our best selves, when we know that sometimes that's just not humanly possible, because we're not robots. Teacher attendance may be important, but so is our physical, mental, and emotional health. And I believe that collective bargaining will allow teachers to bargain and discuss these things that may be causing all of this burnout, so that we can try to work towards a solution so that teachers can stay in Petersburg and stay in education. All in all, I know that something must be done to make things better for teachers. That something is collective bargaining. We as teachers want to be heard. We want a seat at the table. We don't want you all to make decisions apart from us, but we want you to make decisions with us and keep us in mind. I hope and pray that you have truly heard what has been said tonight and that it will implore you to choose collective bargaining. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to hear what we have to say. My colleagues haven't said anything that I couldn't have said better myself. I agree with everything. My name is Gabrielle Patrick, and I teach sixth-grade history at Blanford Learning Academy. I'm going to keep this brief. Petersburg, I've looked at it as a progressive city. We've tried to make a lot of changes toward more positive steps. Having inclusive communities, having the best technology, the latest technology. And collective bargaining is just one more step towards being progressive. I can't think of one reason why progressive, why collective bargaining would not be something that we would put on the table and we would consider, that you all would consider for us. There is a lot of teacher burnout. We want to stop that. We want to stop rollover, teacher turnover. A lot of the same, the people that I started with in Petersburg, they no longer work here with me. And I don't want to see that anymore. I want to grow old and retire with people. And I have a lot of good friends sitting right here that I would like to have a good teaching life with, you know, I guess. But Petersburg is progressive. There's nothing to stop this from happening. So we bring this toward, put this before you and ask you to consider this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vanae Kirkland. I am a seventh-grade teacher in history from Vernon Johns Middle School. And I will just continue the chorus line of, "We want to limit teacher burnout, and we want to strengthen teacher retention." I will tell you this, I love my job, but I don't know how long I can stand this, right? Just coming from the heart. I love the people I work with and I work for, but everybody in here on both sides of the aisle know how stressful this job is. I've never worked in a place that has had so much talent, so much beauty, so much genius. And it's like a candle that is quickly losing its wax, right? Vernon Johns has lost at least five teachers this year, right? And we lost them before the middle of the school year, okay? We had a young, black, male engineer teaching these children. He's gone. That's, that saddens me, right? Because I didn't have young, black, educated professionals in my life when I was these children's age. This man could have been doing anything in the world, and a month ago, he decided that there was better. But Petersburg City Public Schools is worth staying as an educated profession. It's worth waking up and going to school and teaching the next generation of young, black engineers. But we lost one, because there is better in terms of financial, you know, ability, capability, right? And that's another star who decided to shine somewhere else. Do something to keep your teachers. I love these people. I love the children. I love that the children get to see these people. Please keep us. One way to do so is to give us a seat at the table. Collective bargaining, that's all we're asking for, is a seat at the table. We're not saying, get away from the table. We just want to sit with you. So please, consider, and thank you for listening.
Good evening, everyone. Many of you all know me and know me well. I am Jonna Baskis, a twenty-seven-year veteran of Petersburg City Public Schools and a member of NEA, VEA, and PEA. Now, don't let my years of service fool you. I have a lot of energy, zeal, and tenacity to continue to offer to this district on our journey to excellence. Currently, I'm assigned as an instructional technology resource teacher and have formally served in many other capacities in this district, to include library media specialist, federal and state program specialist, grant writer, and public information officer. Everyone that knows me knows I'm passionate about the work I do here, mainly because I was born and raised in this community and educated first through twelfth grade in this school system. My son is also a proud product of Petersburg City Public Schools. I am, and he is, what our teachers hope for and what the supporters in this community shaped and molded us to be. I want the same for the students that I serve. It is my hope that our students leave an indelible footprint that far surpasses what I believe I have accomplished. To me, teaching is about legacy. It's about what is left behind long after you're gone. I'm here tonight in support of collective bargaining, because I fear my creativity may be stifled due to the brutal fact that we lack the resources and access to freely deliver experiences to students that lend to authentic outcomes tied to real-world connections. As I thought about what that looks like, one particular student quickly comes to mind. She's a high school student. She's already earning money, monetized, as we call it, on multiple platforms. On one app alone, she has seventy-five thousand followers, over one point five million likes on her posts, and five hundred thousand views on her content. She's already the global influencer she aspired to be. Through collective bargaining, better programs that transform learning for students can be negotiated. More relevant professional development with field experts, as Ms. Kirkland alluded to, can be offered. An itinerary specialist like me, who support teachers daily, may have a professional workspace to plan, collaborate, and create with colleagues. As we have seen lately, national trends point to an urgent need for school districts to do all they can do to improve conditions for their teacher workforce. Recent Virginia data shows that collective bargaining stands to not only improve working conditions, but boosts morale and catapult retention, thus positively increasing opportunities for our students. Because Petersburg children and educators are the reason that I, Jonna Wynette Robinson-Baskis, shows up to work every single day, I'm asking that you stand with us in this effort and support collective bargaining. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. They want to turn it in. Ms. Cross, where's Ms. Cross? Ms. Cross, if you could come back. Ms. Wilson, you can come also. Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'm getting an echo in this, so I'm going to have to turn it off. Thank you all for coming tonight. Just want to say, individuals, teachers who had notes, can we have a copy so we can have it for the record? We would appreciate it. Someone did turn in their copies for the board, but if we could give copies to Mr. Wilson, we would appreciate it. Thank you for meeting with, I think you met with every board member now, except Ms. Nguyen and Mr. London, the two board members. Just want to let everyone know, I received the packet from Ms. Wilson and Ms. Cross, and I have submitted the packet to our attorney, who was reviewing it, and who will also meet with the board. who will also meet with the board. I have not heard anything negative from any board members about moving forward. No one has shared that, and so, so far, everything is looking good. It's looking green right now. And so, we want to thank
teachers together to come out and speak. This is the, this is the type of excitement we need at every board meeting, and I think we talked about that, right? Even at city council meeting, even when it's time for, for the budget, we need this crowd behind us when we are presenting the budget and asking city council for the dollars we need to give our teachers. So we need your support as well, because you're going to get our support, and we're asking that you would do the same for us, give us your support as well.
That's our commitment.
Yes.
That's our commitment.
And I do thank you. Thank everyone who came out tonight. We appreciate you. Thank you for all that you do for our students. I know some of you are raising them as your own children, and I thank you for that, so I know it's a lot on you. Some of you take money out of your own pocket to supply for students. Thank you for doing that also, but this board here stands committed, and we look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, please excuse me, because my voice is kind of hoarse, but I wrote down some notes as you all were speaking, and I have to say, as a former educator myself, I have to curtsy to you all, because I know how it is. Things have not changed that much. When I was teaching, we had overclass students in the classroom. There were too much. We, we had disciplinary issues. You have to have a passion. Somebody said passions. Have to have a passion for what you do, and I commend you all, I'm with you, behind you 100%. One thing I have to do in my path of living is that I try not to forget where I come from, and I come from that classroom. I know it's not easy. My mother got out of it in 91 because the criteria students changed. I got out of it in 96, I mean, 96. I got out of it in 2006 because the criteria students changed, so I can identify, because the criteria students have changed since I got out of the classroom. You got me. Thank you.
This is the chairman.
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Pierce, you good?
Yeah. Okay. First of all, thank you. That was a wonderful presentation, and I believe in collective bargaining, but I believe in working with the majority. Now, understand, because I talked to some of you, I haven't talked to the rest of all of you, this union, this collective bargaining is going to need not only your initial support, but it's going to need your financial support, so you need to be members, financial members, because I'm truly going to push for the majority. So 50, I'd say 80%, 90%, all of that sounds good, until you put it on paper and in your pocket. We believe in, in, I believe in the majority, so I need y'all to, the majority of y'all to support this financially, so we can deal with the majority, not a minority representing the majority. We need you. They need you. You need each other. Support each other all the way, not halfway. So when we get to the point and you need to sign up for that membership and pay that money, pay that money, because we cannot work, we do, we do not need a minority representing the majority. We need the majority representing the majority. So do it all the way. Go all the way. I'm pulling for you, and you have my vote.
Good evening, everybody. Excellent presentation, and you have my support.
Thank you.
Working with you all, just like Dr. Federman said, I'm an advocate for teachers. I have been a teacher. I am 100% supportive, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Great job.
Well, thank you for your attention this evening.
And